Welcome to the February 4th Council meeting today. I want to remind everyone to silence your telephones. Also, I want to remind you of our debate and court rules within the of the council debate and court rules. Each person shall perform. Thank you. Each person shall perform. And let's get welcome to the February 4th City Council meeting. To my side. Each person shall perform to participate in language according to the council and leader to be subject to or to be subject to the rule. No member of council or the mayor shall speak with second time on any subject until every member has had an opportunity to speak the first time. A council member and the mayor should limit their remarks on each subject to four minutes. And we had a, no, we had changed that, I'm sorry, to three minutes. Uh, the mayor may be extended for more time if it is a, uh, time, if it is a benefit to the address question from the public upon approval of the council president. The mayor should have the opportunity to take the discussion and to comment on any agenda items before a vote is taken. We do have within our rules about speaking, our term unprofessed only. If an individual speaks unprofessed, we will ask you to discontinue that inappropriate behavior. If this is continued at that time, we will ask you to leave the council meeting. And if you refuse to leave, the assistance of both police department will be requested. At this time, we will have our invocation by Councilor Ervin.
Lord, we come to this time to just thank you for this day, Lord. It may have been cloudy today, but it's always a clear day in your kingdom. Lord, I just thank you for this opportunity, uh, us in the city council and the citizens of joining in this business meeting to discuss the city's business, the city that you helped build, Lord, uh, our ancestor before us, Lord. Lord, we come to you to just thank you for this day. Thank you for the peace, love, and understanding. And Lord, help us to be united and all fronts, Lord, in Jesus' name, amen.
Praise the Lord.
Praise the Lord. To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have a roll call. Councilwoman Smith?
Here.
President Hates?
Here.
Councilman Dunaway?
Here.
Councilwoman Temples?
Here.
Vice President Ervin?
Here.
And Councilwoman Douglas? This accent. Thank you. Our fourth independent item is approval of the minutes. Uh, the minutes was unveiled, is unveiled. Well, before then, we did not have a meeting, so we had to have approval of the January 7th, uh, 2025 video. Also, the meeting of January 21st of 2025 was canceled due to intense weather. And our third, our third information of changes in the agenda is that at the bottom, you will see the next agenda, the next council meeting as of February 4th, and actually, the next council meeting will be February, uh, 18th. Okay, this time, we motion to approve. I'll make a motion.
Second.
Roll call please. Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
President Hates?
Aye.
Councilman Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilwoman Temples?
Aye.
Vice President Ervin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas? Okay. Uh, next, we have a recognition and award is Mr. Marvin Austin Jr. Here. Mr. Marvin Austin Jr. Okay, we will move on to adoption of resolution. Our first resolution will be presented by Mrs. Shelby Councilwoman Temples.
A resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Bogalusa to declare the following property to be auctioned according to the city of Bogalusa Police Department inventory list and values.
Thank you. Uh, may I have a, a motion and we will have public participation.
I'll make a motion.
Pass second.
Roll call please.
Public participation.
Public participation. Anyone has any public participation? Okay, in council participation.
I have a question. Um, once these items are auctioned off, where does the money go? Does it go to the police or does it just go into the general fund?
I believe it will go to the police department, but someone can confirm that. Uh, Mr. Perry?
Uh, it, it, it depends on how well the city by and they are. If it's a police unit.
Who makes this decision? Weird, this is the weird from finance department.
Yeah, it depends on whether I, what apartment item came out. It was a police unit, it would go back to the police general fund. But it's probably works if you go back to their department.
After auction?
After auction.
We go back to the.
The department, the department, uh, I appreciate the.
The police department.
Well, I don't know which one, but some, some of the stuff, item. But if it's a police unit, it'll go back to the police, uh, fund. But it's, it's different departments. It just depends on the department that I, what the person for. We're coming back to that department.
Thank you. The best thing you can surprise council?
Yes, it does, but the, the wording makes it seem like it's just police, uh, department items when it's really not. The wording of the resolution.
I do have council discussion, for the description, um, through the line items, it does say like if it's a police, um, item as well as a public works items, for instance, um, a lawnmower, a riding lawnmower. So, um, I don't know if we need to go back in and change the language to say R. Or we can leave it the same because it's something that we're going to be voting on, but just for clarification, the money will go back to the police department and public works depends on the line items. Because some of these items are, like I say, it has a bush house. It has a zero turn, so just so the citizens to know. Um, if you're looking on page three of your packet, it shows each line item, each description, as well as the value amount. And it's total in value of nine thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars. And please, and, sorry, and please make sure you read that some of the items have good, runs good, um, damaged Excel. For clarification, if anybody have any questions.
Also, is this Samantha Weeden here tonight? Okay, um, that was a question, yeah. Uh, Mr. Perry, I'd like to, uh, have you speak as well on the change, possible changes once the, uh, equipment goes to ice.
Yes, Council President. Um, there's just two vehicles that's in public works. It's the two thousand and eight Ford F-250 XL. Two of them are. We're going to have that off of this for the, um, reconditioning back in service. And it could be the two thousand and three Ford one fifty, um, who cat being period four. It's still a little bit of going to be there instead of buying and bringing it for you. So we got to cross that.
Okay, because it's, it's engine and body damage for three hundred dollars, so we're going to cross that out as well. And the city is looking to repair itself to keep correct.
I, I agree.
The city is looking to repair those damages and keep.
Well, we would get more use in the city by bringing vehicles. You know, the work that they do is certainly equipped at a certain level. Not to spend on a vehicle without this money used at the moment.
Thank you.
Um, question, um, um, Mr. Smalls? Is, uh, when is the au- auction, so public will know, uh, select and participate? When is the auction possibly as I said?
Hopefully in this month. It's, 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 uh, planned out. The auction company can't do all that advertising when we get it out. And we do our part, Samantha, we will prove you the point person that I will pay that for the answer.
Yeah, because I think y'all can sign, go to slideau auction dot com and slide up, sign up. Because I remember that website. That's the company that, it's, they got a different name for it, but I remember the website being slideau auction dot com. So y'all can go to that. It's just, I know it's a spring auction, yeah.
It's springy.
So, and y'all can actually get flyers sent to your house for free, text messages, all kinds of things. That's enough, all kinds of texts. So, to let you know about when the auction's coming.
Is there any other council discussion?
No.
Uh, not on the council discussion, but in case of concern on whether funds will go. Uh, this information was submitted, as I said, on the purchasing department on it. And, uh, I would like to thank you, uh, Mr. Weery for clarifying exactly, you know, whether, whether this funds will go. So, uh, at this time, I would like to, uh, tell a roll call please. Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
President Hates?
Aye.
Councilman Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilwoman Temples?
Aye.
Vice President Ervin?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item will be presented by. So. A resolution to support the appointment of the fiscal administrator of City Bogalusa in accordance with revised statute of Louisiana, revised statute thirty-nine, one three five one. Whereas the city council of the city of Bogalusa has determined that it is necessary of appointment of the fiscal administrator to address the city's ability to maintain finances, financial stability as determined in the revised statute thirty-nine, thirteen fifty-one. Whereas Louisiana legislative auditors, attorney generals, and the state treasurer at the hearing at the fiscal review committee for the state of Louisiana on January twenty-ninth, two thousand and five twenty-five voted, this committee voted unanimously to place the city of Bogalusa under fiscal administration and to recommend in the court, the appointment of Robert Nielsen CPA as fiscal administrator for the city of Bogalusa. Whereas the city council for the city of Bogalusa is now in favor of cooperation with the attorney general to request that the court place the city of Bogalusa under fiscal administration and appoint Robert Nielsen CPA as fiscal administrator. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council, the governing authority for the city of Bogalusa is on record as supporting the fiscal review committee to vote to place the city under fiscal administration. And Louisiana legislative auditor and attorney general's recommendation to the court of the appointment of Robert Nielsen CPA as fiscal administrator and hereby gives his consent to such placement and appointment. Being further resolved, let the council hereby urge us at the attorney general to file a joint motion and consent judgment on behalf of the city of Bogalusa with the court as provided for in Louisiana revised statute thirty-nine, thirteen fifty-one, eight three. So that the court may render the judgment appointment as provided for the statute dealing with the appointment of a fiscal administrator. Louisiana revised statute thirty-nine, thirteen fifteen, and thirteen fifty-seven. The city council of the city of Bogalusa met in a regular session which is today, February fourth, day twenty twenty-five. The actual stated resolution having been read in full and submitted to a vote. The vote therefore was as follows. I remove the city. At this time, I would like, uh, a motion, I mean, a public participation? A motion. A motion.
I'll make a motion.
And I submit a motion. Okay, at this time, we have public participation, please.
Because this is a business time, we will have three minutes. Please state the name, the name and address for your record.
Right. Page four of nineteen thirty-one D with grace. I think you all are going in the wrong direction of wanting Nielsen to be this, this official administrator. Because it's a conflict of interest. He worked with the previous administration before Tyron Troy got to be mayor. And you had problems with that budget, and it's still not completed. And he was part of that budget stuff. So why would you appoint him? What you all should have been doing, staying out of, out, I stopped working with the good old boys and letting them tell you what to do. What you need to do is get somebody that not even connected to Bogalusa. That would be the right thing to do. If y'all can't do that, I think all of y'all need to go, because that's not the proper way to do business in Bogalusa. If you got a problem in Bogalusa, go outside and get outside.
Please state the name and address.
President six forty-one, St. Augustine.
Six forty-one St. Augustine, very Bogalusa, Louisiana. I agree with this conflict of interest. This council has fallen up about putting people in positions to support their own personal agendas here. You know that this is a conflict of interest. You know the public doesn't agree because they didn't vote for the last administration and what's remarination wasn't. Why are we going backwards? Now, you guys, as I will explain later, y'all are, are really trailing of EEOC and the labor commission. And the reason that I know that is because I'm disgusted with them. And some of these practices are incorrect practices that are being done by this council for their own agenda. Putting people in place to support their plan, not to support the city. So we're sick and tired of this. So the city of Bogalusa citizens here, we're going to take action. Office of Personnel Management, Department of Labor, EEOC Commission. We can barely understand what you're reading to us. Each word is said individually, so we have a hard time following that and even understanding that. And then y'all don't have a problem with that, but y'all always offended. Y'all always offended, but you don't recognize some of the actions that you're doing is creating and fostering an environment of discrimination, conflict of interest, and negativity. Now, I'll be talking later on this matter. The mayor had nothing to do with this. Nothing. The citizens took this action on. We're sick and tired of it. We're tired of being sat here and having to listen to a third grade week each work. We have to get through this need in a timely manner. And if you can't do that, have someone to read it for you. Stop putting us through it. I'm not going to disrespect anybody. I'm just going to tell you all the truth. And a lot of the practices that y'all are introducing tonight are conflict of interest. Not only with the Department of Labor, but also with the EEOC Commission and the federal building in New Orleans. This will be discussed later.
Good evening. My name is David Grantham, two zero one, six zero, St. Teresa Street, Covington, Louisiana. My father and I have been associated with the Bogalusa Airport since the late nineteen seventies. My father, Father Grantham, was the airport manager for approximately thirty years. We had a family-owned business at the airport, served under, all the way back to Toy Taylor, Matt, all the way up to Wendy. You had disagreements, ups and downs, backwards and forwards. We always were moving in the same direction, but better than the city of Bogalusa, better than our airport. In two thousand and fourteen, my father and I built a ten thousand square foot facility at the airport. My eighty-five-year-old dad has given his life to Bogalusa and the Bogalusa Airport. We no longer have a commercial interest out there. We have our own airplanes that we reveal, go out there every day. Currently on an airline pilot, fly for one of the largest airlines in the world. And prior to that, spent twenty-four years in federal law enforcement, flying jets and helicopters, doing counter drug missions all over the U.S. and nine different foreign countries. I was looking forward to retiring here, working out at the airport on my own airplanes. And things weren't going great until this administration came in the office. Two years ago, the Bogalusa Airport was optimistic. It was exciting, it had inertia, momentum. Businesses were coming, yes, it was just phone calls. But they were, what's going on in Bogalusa here, get things out there. People were wanting to build hangars. People were wanting to build their businesses up there. Again, just phone calls, no money, no checks had been written to break down. But there was excitement. We had a gentleman who was leasing a hangar, doing aircraft maintenance, business was booming. Last two years, that is determined, that is reversed one hundred and eighty degrees under this administration. The airport is basically a ghost town now, all the way up to the point where the airport manager called the police on my dad yesterday for vandalism. Eighty-five-year-old man, far away. Request a bond, request a bond, request a bond. Now, um, Mr. President. This is the day, Matt, this is the president, this is the council president, this is the mayor, I need to say.
At this time, we have to put out a podium, please.
Ma'am, I'll, I'll wrap this up right here.
And then no cross talking, please.
I'll, I'll wrap this up. I wholeheartedly, my father and I and others, with the best interest of the airport, no monetary interest, no commercial interest, have attempted to work with the mayor and the airport manager. We've been rebuffed to the detriment of the city of Bogalusa, to Washington parish, and to the good people that pay taxes here. I wholeheartedly thank you all, council folks, council men and women, I've talked them in here. Thank you for not being steamrolled. Thank you for taking the contrarian point of view of many people. Thank you for your courage on this. Thank you for calling in administrator, a fiscal administrator. The people of Bogalusa deserve this. Their tax dollars deserve to be spent wisely, and I wholeheartedly endorse this ordinance.
Thank you. Thank you.
What's the most filed?
Kevin, the file for fourteen Mississippi Avenue. I'm not going to go over the conflict of interest because again, the problem is that he has a conflict of interest because he has clients that are going to come before the city council and before this administration. And he, he serves the people that he is going to be making decisions about. And that is conflict of interest. If his clients are coming and asking you something and he rules in their favor, how do we know that that was based on, on a prejudgment or because those are his clients? There's a basic conflict of interest. Is he going to choose himself from every single client that comes in that he has when he's making decisions about going for with something as far as the fiscal administrator? There's a problem, there's a huge problem. And I guarantee that I'm going to be following through on that and watching every single decision he made and checking if it's his client's. I promise. Thank you. Bye.
Divine laws eleven twenty-seven, average of J. The conflict of interest we have is endless. The conflict of interest that we have that we haven't seen any financials. The conflict of interest is that everything that the council has presented to the board, they agree with. That's a conflict of interest. The conflict of interest is down the city, instead of going down a drain. And we got people that's, uh, supposed to be helping the city, building the city, doing the direct opposite. That is the conflict of interest. The conflict of interest is of people of Bogalusa who are for Bogalusa is tied to the bull job. Straight out. The conflict of interest is the mayor's authority on saying things one way. Ms. Davis, smart as a will, won't call a lot of people would not provide any financial to the council's sixty billion office. That's against the law, the law, state law, federal law. They put in the ordinance, requiring this, and have not one time have they received. That's a conflict of interest. The conflict of interest is that the whole city is bankrupt. And it ain't getting no better. That's the problem. Put them out. Put them out. Put them out. They do it because you allow it. We gonna stand our business in here. We gonna stand our business in here from this day forth. Remember, each one of y'all council members, look at me and look at me good. We gonna stand our business in here. When they get out of line, do your job. If you're dumb, somebody else will. I'm for Bogalusa. I'm for the people who trying to rock out of the city, and they're not only people that I'm for. The other people God will take care of you. He said, "Business is mine, I shall repay." Still for the city of, I ain't with you. Thank you.
My name is Keith Merron. My address is nine twenty-five, Sports Street Park, seventy-eight Bogalusa. It's time out of this game, man. He told me a time after time for same old foolishness. Mr. Nielsen, I am looking against him. I know him well. He has a nice personality, but we should have got someone that's got a feeling with Bogalusa and the Bogalusa system. We don't need someone that's, uh, that does business with the good old boys because that's a conflict of interest, and y'all know it. So who are y'all working for? Y'all not working for the citizens? So if y'all get somebody who's in favor of the good old boys, come assist to everybody who you working for. People know that, they just don't want to say it because either they've been bought, they come up here and say, "Well, what the good old boys telling them to say? They too stupid to realize the, uh, what's really going on, that I sent the council is not for us." And since you all are not for us, if you don't get your act together, then come and ask the town, we want to be for you all. Let's do what's right for our kids. Everybody say that for the kids. Let's do what's right for our kids in Bogalusa and stop playing these games and get somebody in there that's gonna help Bogalusa, not somebody who's gonna help the good old boys to keep Bogalusa down. Do your job and get off the counter.
Richard Burster, nineteen thirty-two, Little Street, Bogalusa, Tennessee. Councilor, thank y'all, did a good job. Uh, I stayed a long time ago, this is back before. I'm not blaming on y'all, I'm not blaming on administration, but Bogalusa wasn't growing up. I've been here twenty-eight years all my life, and Bogalusa is going down. Now, I do know, I'm not trying to blame the budget on the mayor. I'm not trying to blame just the rest of the people on the mayor. I always tried to tell the mayor the things that I see him doing, like, don't want to turn him the budget, don't know how to talk to y'all. Don't want to turn his credit card in. All of this is by law. This is by law. All this other stuff that they hollered about, okay, some of the men are against him, that's not. But if he wants to be the mayor of everybody, he got to do what is right. He can't keep bringing himself on winning. Whatever win he did, that's overwrought. That's why me putting him in office, that's why I put him in office. Now, if he come up there and say, "Well, I'm not gonna give y'all another budget," or "I'm not gonna turn my credit card in," or something like that, his basic number rule, number one rule, is he can't do anything without y'all, per se. Okay, if it was the city working down there, was doing something, Mr. Patterson, or the mayor would get rid of him. Okay, but so he can come up there and not do what he's supposed to do by law? Not by law? He ain't gonna do what he's supposed to do by law? Simple, basic thing? That's what I'm getting them off. That's what I keep on getting them off. And for people to tell me somebody taking up with somebody and a good old boy, I, I'm not for the check up. That, that's not the issue right now. The issue is the mayor, do the mayor of everybody. He walked out of the office not too long ago. I haven't got a chance to talk to us yet. You owe us conscience. You, you, you walked out of the meeting. You, Mr. Mason, Mr. Mason said that, uh, he said it was y'all, but he didn't tell none of y'all. He work for us. We don't just, just get up and just walk out of here and don't tell nobody. Come on, come on. If he wants to be better than women, he can't do those type of things. And I, I tried to talk to him, but I can't get close to him. I talked to Mr. Mason, I talked to Mr. Patterson. And he knew I talked to him, he would get mad, but it's all, it's all over now. I, I tried to tell Mr. Patterson and Mr. Mason, they both shook their head. Sometimes everybody knows something, everybody ain't gonna see the vision at the same time. So he need to take some of y'all, I'll talk to him, not talk down to y'all. Y'all older than be the momma and grandma. He going wrong right there, but he don't see. And, and I don't think it's twenty-six yet, so have his brain and put kicked in here.
Thank you, Mr. President. Any other public discussion?
Good evening, this is Corsetti. Hi. Please state the name and address for the party. Deborah Corsetti, seven six four Marshall Richardson Road. Um, I'll be quick. I listened to the hearing of the fiscal administrator, um, and one thing that stuck out in my mind from what I heard was there's a whole bunch of money that they're holding, and once we get our paperwork submitted, um, then we can have access to that money. Although I know a lot of people feel that Mr. Nielsen has a conflict of interest, that is a slight possibility. He is a professional though, he's licensed by the state, he has to take ethics courses. If he does something that's, um, you know, good old boy kind of thing, um, we would have the right to call him out on that and get him replaced. Um, I think he has the experience with our accounting system and our books, and he's been familiar with the things that go to legislative auditor. I think he can most quickly get it all put together and get this ball rolling, um, so we can get that money. Because we need that money to fix the sewers and the streets. So that's what I have to say.
So you, in council discussion?
Um, I have a couple things I'd like to say.
We're now in council session.
Um, first of all, I don't want to see you.
We don't have this for public discussion, an individual just comes forth. No, uh, this is for, the discussion of fiscal administrator, not for public discussion. Did you sign the list for public discussion last?
I signed, I'm just, just say so.
Okay, well, this for public discussion, we're not at that, we're not at that point yet.
Okay, well, I'm looking at this here, say so.
About the fiscal administrator?
About fiscal administrator?
Whatever that is we're talking about.
It's about fiscal administrator, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah. Would you cross your name off this list? That's okay, council.
Because I'm glad to be, uh, my address is twelve twenty-four North Roseville Street. I know the mayor is just gonna be here because I personally wanted to say, I think he's doing all he can to do what he can do. You know, Bogalusa been down a long time. Y'all voted in there, apparently y'all saw something in here, in him, I did too. So it's hard to do things when you got so many people against you, even the people you're working with. So I believe he's doing all he can, and I believe he can do more if, uh, they take, if, if everybody take, that's against him, take their foot off his neck. So councilmen, you know, I know y'all gotta say so, but, you know, working against was right. Bogalusa is a little small town, it shouldn't be all this. You know, it shouldn't be all this going back and forth and being, you know, against one another. You know, when I come down here in twenty twenty, Bogalusa was a mess. Things started trying to get a little better, but I believe the mayor can do more if you all were with him, y'all were together and get this thing going, all this, you know, going against him, it's, it's not gonna ever get nowhere. And I believe this here, and that's what the Bible says, if God wanted you more than the world against you. So I believe God is gonna be with this man, and God gonna work it out for him, and ever since he been in there, all hell gonna brood to something. All hell gonna brood to something. And then this last go-round, arresting, nothing, nothing from that. So I just want to say that I'm for the mayor, and I believe he gonna do better if people start working with him.
Okay, now we are in. Come on, yes, okay. This will be our, unless it's someone else, this will be our last, uh, speaker, public speaker.
Hi, my name is Kelly Kelly, four eight two three nine, remember Kane Road, Frank I first came to Bogalusa almost thirty years ago. I always had a vested interest, had a book that's been in progress for at least twenty-five of those years, outlining exactly the things that we're talking about today. My first question to the council is, when can we anticipate the twenty-two budget that was left over from the previous administration to pass?
You talking about the account, the audit, the actual audit, our auditor, our CPA is working on information.
Point of all. I thought we talking about the fiscal administrator.
Okay, everyone, please, please, this is, this is the, this is very hard, this is very, this is very.
Okay, exactly. So after coming to several meetings, I understand that they hold up and not releasing a bunch of money from the state, and of course, we've been advised that Julia Lethal has a bunch of money in the pipeline that I believe you're gonna receive in March to help with Bogalusa's water system, which is desperately needed as.
Miss Dan, you some further, pardon? This has to be further about, uh, this little's fund, but.
So you're not receiving a reward letter?
No, I'm sorry, no, I have not received one.
Okay. So basically, a fiscal administrator is coming in, as I understand it, because the twenty twenty-two budget has held everything up. So we're holding this mayor accountable, and we're bringing in yet another fiscal administrator, just a couple of years after one has already been here, and the problems still exist. You know, the retirement funds are underfunded, this is underfunded, that's underfunded, we need to make cuts here and there and everywhere. That's all understandable. But if you kind of just worked on passing the twenty-two budget, release the money from Julia Lethal, release the money that the state is holding, they said they're holding a bunch of money for Bogalusa, and for, to charge that on, and the mayor, I think it's kind of unfair because he's only been able to spend fifty percent of whatever the budget was, right?
So.
Here, time out, approach your time. You're getting two things confused. You're talking about the twenty-five budget that we haven't been turned down and voted down back in December. We voted down a twenty twenty-five operating budget. The twenty twenty-two, that has yet to be turned in. You understand? The twenty-three audit has yet to be turned in. Administration has to give all those files over to our auditors.
Correct.
Jack and Hammond, CPA, which is independent of all the thing we're talking about.
Correct, but we're bringing in a fiscal administrator because we haven't been able to pass twenty-two, so therefore, I want to know.
I, I would like to admit that, no. No, a fiscal administrator, which was decided upon by the fiscal review board, uh, the treasurer, the AP, and they say the auditor, they made the decision to bring in a fiscal administrator. Not, not only because of the twenty twenty-two audit and twenty twenty-three audit, which is on the non-compliances, there were a number of efficiencies that were made for, uh, the city of Bogalusa, including payroll access, over million, maybe two million dollars out of it, maybe. Uh, in reference to some of our, our retirement has not been paid. There was a benchmark, uh, that they named that determine their, uh, their particular decision on bringing in the fiscal administrator as a help to work with, with the mayor, to work along with the mayor as well as the council. We are still on a home rule charter, and we have a mayor-council form of government to work together. And that's, that's primarily, uh, why they are bringing, uh, a fiscal administrator in. Uh, Mr. Nielsen, from what I understand, is brought in on a decision strictly of the fiscal administrator, Mr. Watkins back, not the council. It has to do with his experience, it has to do to the cost for fiscal administrator, in which we will be responsible for paying, so. And from what I understand, the, if the fiscal administrator was, was outside of Bogalusa, they would not be here in Bogalusa for their duties. They will have to, have to be a remote fiscal administrator, not, you know, as, and be paid on top of it. So, no, it's not only because of twenty twenty-two audit, uh, last I spoke with Ms. Hammond, she needed a couple more files. Now, only just Ms. Hammond, the CPA needs our accountants, uh, Eisner and Ever, they need additional files also to close out, uh, twenty twenty-two audit. We were excited about the audit being done at the end of January. Excuse me, excuse me, and I do that because we can't record the records. Yeah, we cannot, uh, we want this to be, uh, done, because if we do get the twenty twenty-two audit closed out, and she proceeds to twenty twenty-three, at that time, we can get an extension. And once we get an extension, we can, some of those funds can be loosened, can be given to the, uh, the city of Bogalusa. As I said, if this one administrator decided upon, uh, bringing the, the auditor, let's say the auditor, decided upon bringing a fiscal administrator to the city of Bogalusa to, to have some of our, our, our finances and some of our records straightened out. There's room about no, no wire, uh, which no one told me personally, but I did hear about it, but now I'm hearing that that's not true, we don't have a wire. So we just want, we just want the best for Bogalusa and the best for our citizens. Chris See.
And one last thing, of course, we start the clock here. Uh, also, we received a letter, um, I have not read the letter, but on January the tenth, the city of Bogalusa sewer system fell out in bonds with the Department of Environmental Affairs. Now, only seven to one minute and two seconds. Go ahead, ma'am.
Well, the DQ letter, when you haven't read, I mean, that was just a matter of time. The system's over a hundred years old. But was Mr. Bailey not brought in to get things squared up so the twenty-two budget could be passed? And the money could be released still nearby?
We did not power, we did not, that's the question, but actually, we did not power the country.
Okay, well, I can't help it, no, he's no longer here, so I had to ask the question.
He's no longer with the council?
With the state?
That's right.
Okay. All right, I just, to echo the lady that spoke before me, I, I really think if there would have been a healthier relationship between the council and the administration, not just the mayor, the entire administration, to get a better understander, understanding. And never have I heard anyone try to educate the public on all of these goings-on. It's very difficult for the average layperson to understand line items and budget items and fiscal administrators and, you know, how senators and representatives can impact a call for a fiscal administrator, et cetera, because all of those complaints are coming from somewhere. So with all that being said, I would just love to see with this fiscal administrator coming in that you guys can, if there are any adverse feelings, work it out with the administration because they have the education.
Thank you.
Okay, we have council session. I, I want to speak. Um, I went to the meeting last week at the Capitol. There were things disclosed by the legislative auditors during this meeting that we, as a council, were not aware of. I've been on the finance committee for two years. They disclosed things in this meeting that we did not, were not aware of as a council. We did not know that one point two million dollars in taxes had not been paid to the IRS, and over six hundred thousand hadn't been paid to the state. We didn't know that. There were many things disclosed in this meeting that we did not know about as a council because they were never told to.
Honestly, I look at the budget. So I know that there's some issues with it. So in order to address those issues, you have to be willing to say that they come to the table.
And that's exactly right. We're going to change to set a date for your updates against the, um, the budget.
And also, one last thing, our report, we have given them everything they're asked for. I did not, I came in, took a bunch of information. Uh, our RIS came in making one more information, the same information that we made them. So we had.
You have to assign this.
So you don't vote.
And I want to say one thing about Mr. Weary. He did try to make a good call of jeopardy. At night, you know, but his hands were kind of tied. He did not serve what position he serves now?
Um, the Director, Acting Director, uh, bookkeeper.
Okay, all right. So, well, we did not know that.
Yeah.
Um, well, the thing is that, uh, he didn't make an effort to do that. This, I'm gonna tell you something that, uh, it highly makes accounts so mad when you don't show up to do your own presentation. No more administration even involved to come to the public hearing. Uh, and by the time we went to council meeting, uh, we found out all the merits. We knew how it was.
And Mr. Weary, uh, what's your, what's your position, uh, taken on the payroll taxes to IRS at this point?
So we, uh, we made a payment for the fourth quarter. So basically what we're doing now is, uh, working with the IRS to get some of the payments waived. We have the money to make the taxes up. And I think that's what, uh, my predecessor was going, uh, his plan was to make payments after we got that little taxes. Uh, just kind of held out a little too long. But we're working with IRS to get some of the payments waived so we can lower that number. So we've sent, uh, two hundred just last week. Again, we discussed it, but we sent two hundred twenty thousand last week to cover the fourth quarter. And as of my turn in, every payroll tax has been made on time.
And which file account?
That, I got it, the general form. So I'm, I'm, I'm making sure that everything is done. Our payroll taxes were made on time, sales taxes were made on time, um, and our unemployment. So all those reports were delayed because of, um.
Are you, you're into the three million dollars that came in from property taxes?
I didn't have to touch that.
You didn't have to touch that? So we, why did, why did all of a sudden we have a deficit and why did it go on for a whole year?
Well, we never, we never had a deficit. We had front balance. Clearly, we just didn't want to use every dollar that we had. Uh, even with the, the offer fund, when I came in, we had eight hundred thousand dollars in offer funds. Those, I'm sorry, we had eight hundred thousand dollars in offer funds. Those funds could have been used for lack or replacement of income, but we kept those in place. So we could have used those funds to take care of some of this stuff, but we didn't. So now we're setting up. So tho- those funds could have been used for replacing the revenue. And I could, we could have taken those funds and paid some of the stuff that they're knocking us for. But we didn't because we didn't have the funds. So now you have seven hundred four thousand. And we haven't used any of that or any other source of problems that we have now. So we still paying that out of our, our, our revenue to the operating costs. We have, we have money now. We didn't manage it, but we said we had the front balance and we just didn't want.
So what's happened, if you're coming like all back in here, but it is what's happening and you're trying to grab your head around what's going on? That's, that's, I can see that.
I mean, you know, I, I'm gonna keep telling you, right? It was a show problem. We made a change.
Right.
They, they, they was not giving out the information as I would like and it was not giving information to you.
As you would like.
As you would like. So at this point, we made a change and we're trying to address every issue that has been going on. Now, it's my understanding, going forward, we are in a great position. But as, uh, Mr. Weary said, we were very conservative with our finances. We didn't spend what we didn't have and we'll pick up so there was no bouncing of any.
So that means if a fiscal administrator comes in, I don't know, you know, I'm not sure about the vote. But if a fiscal administrator comes in and we're in a great position, uh, it will reveal that they're, they won't be needed, correct?
Well, yeah. But like, if we have the money, I mean, if they come in for, for financially right now. But, uh, I guess to your point, too, you still weren't getting the reports that you needed every month. So going forward, I'll make a point, and that's what I was trying to meet with you to see what they did. Did the financing, so I can make sure that I had the main reconciliation to state. And all that presented to you all at the time of the management, so you have that.
Well, actually, actually, at the hearing, uh, our, the fact that we, it was, it was mentioned that we need a ordinance for our bank. But that was not the big picture. And as, uh, Councilwoman said earlier, and Councilman said earlier, we really found out some things that we did not even know was gonna, um, really get. So, uh, it's just very surprising.
I want to remind the public and y'all that, that under 2024 law, they can send a fiscal administrator over just a sewer system, which is now out of compliance. And like I say, they pinned us down. And these, what they're requesting in that ten-page letter, which I haven't yet read. Everybody else has read it, but it loses its meaning. But I'm just telling you that, uh, anyway, that it's just that these things have to be taken care of.
And that they need business, they need business. Absolutely, Councilman. But we do understand that looking at the system, these are ongoing problems that have been not addressed or yet addressed. And right now, they're being addressed at lightning speed with the staff that we have. We're very conservative in spending money and making sure we stay within our three-fold system to make sure we get the best bankroll. So when you stress that statement about the sewer system, at no point in time, which is like I said, that it did follow up and it's correct. Because we can have, we have turned around right now. How is we doing it? I just got the pump in and I'm planning where I'm at. I just have to do some other paperwork and those stations, those two main stations, and then take a way of pressure on the system. But right now, the only thing I can tell you is that this situation did not happen overnight. It can't be fixed overnight. There's sixty-two pump-up stations that needs, you have new pumps in each station. And to address that massive amount of money, it would take a lot of time. Try and expect wisely to get this system back quick as possible with no expense to the city budget where the city goes to deficit financing. So I, I take ownership in this.
And your button D, K?
I let DQ them have that. And we have contacted them, we've been in contact with them for a period of time. And as you know, they did come down here and I spoke to them directly. And I have eaten the day, got everything out to them. It's ready for pickup, so all our facts are in there. Only thing I can tell you, and you, and the council as a whole, this problem took a minute to get. And I, I came in and asked God trying to fix it because it's gonna take a little while to fix it.
I do want to say, we are, we are also dealing with signs and public records requests. Uh, the Department of Health, uh, has chimed in as well as, as you mentioned, DQ. And, uh, some other matters with, uh, some of our departments that we're fulfilling, uh, particular, uh, requests from their public requests. So we're pulling records as we speak, uh, even pulling records from some local folks, you know? So this is, this is more than just making a, a yes or no decision that, that we're doing. Uh, it's been thought out. Uh, are there any other councils?
I do have council discussion that I have been trying to discuss as well as make some clarification to the citizens who elected us, um, to sit here. We're not here going back and forth, arguing and fighting and not having an organization and not doing a lot with the administration. That's not the case. Some citizens see it that way, but those who are on top of game and know what's going on and educate themselves and reading and trying to keep up with positive things that are going on, they know that the council is definitely not fighting with the administration. We do thank you, Mr. Reginald, for stepping up. I do, um, say some news back. The mayor is with disposition and he's willing. It's not the council that want to see him fall, obviously, it's some of his staff. And as he figured it out, he does get rid of them and he replaced them, as you can see, with a new face that has more expertise and that's trying to guide the city in the right direction. So do not please take anything out of context that the council is not approving this, is not approving that. If y'all keep up with statistics, we have approved mainly almost everything that's set before us that need to be approved that is appropriate for the citizens, um, to move to the city forward. Also, we had some things that were shut down by council, but hence the compensation that we brought for, um, about compensation three. So keep in mind that we're here, we're living the city and we do all our compensation's up and working. And yes, we are aware that things just don't happen overnight. But we're also aware, as kids, when your parents were raising you, certain things that you just don't let out the house to be discussed. And as councilmates, we're finding out new things, new things we do know that we do not share with the citizens because we don't want to get y'all in the uproar. We don't want y'all going on Facebook saying this, saying that, they, hey, she, he, that's childish things. We're here for a business. We're here to run a business. We're here to do balances and checks. Once they give us a balance, a budget, anything, and we're not committed with it. That's why we have CPAs and have a CPA firm to help us. And if that firm doesn't feel comfortable with passing things, then therefore it will not be passed. Mr. Reginald has stepped up, he's doing a wonderful job. But each council member could sit here and say, we know the day that he was hired, we knew he was hired as a bookkeeper and we wasn't told upfront. Now we have a new position, we can honestly sit here and say, we didn't much know he had a new position. So don't, don't say that the council isn't working with the administration. That's, that's not it. A lot of people are being moved around, we don't even know anything about. We have people on leave, taking care of family, sick leave that are being, that are being fired. I'm calling, trying to get work on his head, who do I supposed to talk to? I have no idea because I found out the person has been fired. Also, leave and fire, who does that? This nice gentleman got up and spoke about the airport. People put work into this city, but if we're not aware of what's going on, then we're not aware. We can't always be transferred with the citizens to electing us to sit here because we don't always know what's going on. If y'all called, y'all asked us for something, we're gonna try our best to get the best accurate information to research and give back to y'all. Then, I don't know who the good boy system are, but I do know about the good old police chief who I have been speaking with. And yes, I'm all for the children. I am a mother, I'm a social worker, and definitely I will be working with the good old boys in hell. Because when we have grownups that get up to come to the pole to try to discredit us, talk about us, talk about who we being paid by, but they're on the internet being perverted with our little kids that we're here to protect in the system. So yes, I have a problem with that and I will be working with the good old boys system to make sure that you are in jail. Anybody, anybody that you, that's afraid, come to me. I'll be the advocate to speak up for those people who are getting in the inbox, doing wrong towards our little kids. They should not be allowed. Now, back to the subject, what I was sitting on, we are here, we are trying to do our best. We're trying to work for the citizens, which y'all have elected us to do. Y'all didn't look up our page. We work above and beyond, over hours after hours. Some of y'all sit in the audience, ask adults, you shake your head, you come up here, you try to discredit people who have higher educations than y'all, then retire and call them a third grader after it's mine. Now, I'm gonna remain in my place because I'm the one that want to go to jail, but I can sign myself out because I am here to do what's right. With those words, I can give them back to you. I have no problem with doing it. I'm the youngest person that's sitting up here and I can get on anyone's level. But I do want the citizens to know, we're not fighting with the administration. And I would say and say again, I will advocate for the mayor. He is trying to do what's right. He is new in this position. When he don't know if something is going the wrong way, he replaced him and he hired with someone else that he thinks that can do a better job in there to keep the city afloat. I'm not here to downgrade anybody. I can't talk about anybody out here because first I have to look at myself, I would have to look in the mirror. I'm far from perfect, but I'm far from stupid too. So y'all can have a nice day as well.
Thank you, thank you.
Very quick, uh, and keep in mind the new information that we heard tonight. And if, if that matches up with what the fiscal administrator sees, he shouldn't be here very long. Not, not like, not like the previous administration, uh, previous fiscal administration. Uh, and I want to tell you the truth, that the previous fiscal administration, uh, administrator saw a gravy train and he rode it for a long time. This guy don't do that. He's gonna be in and out, he's a busy man. He's got three thousand clients around the world. He's not gonna waste our time, uh, and your taxpayer dollars. So let's get out.
Okay, roll call with.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
President Kate?
Aye.
Councilman Dunaway? Councilwoman Temples?
Aye.
Vice President Urban?
Aye.
Thank you, uh, targets. Resolution be read by Councilman Urban.
A resolution to appoint the council member of District D. Uh, at this time, we are going to be at the top of the city council, uh, the city of Bubalusa does hereby appoint Julie Blackwell-Kellis as council member of District D as opposed to the appointment to replace council member Norman Keenan Kenny Kellis Jr.
At this time, at this time, I will make a question. And I need a second, please.
So.
Thank you. Any participation?
King Mary, 25, East Washington, San Diego, Louisiana. Counselor, now I have to say this hardly, but one time, I agree with y'all. I went to church with, uh, Counselor McKellis and his wife. And they treated me very nice. And we, I'll make this short, you know, priests don't be lonely. When I went to Westside, you know how it is, coming from one church, one racial church to another. You know how it could be on both sides of the equation. So I was kind of nervous going down, you know? After God had told me, didn't just fuck with me, don't join that church. And I'm like, Lord, what's wrong with you? What's wrong with you telling me you're gonna do that? But God don't think like that anymore. So when I got up to go, I had already told, uh, Mr. Kennedy that I was going to join and he was like, keep an eye on what you. I'm like, are you sure? You gonna walk this black man down the aisle, uh, knowing how people think on both sides? He was like, yeah, I sure will. And so, long story short, he and his wife always treated me with respect over at Westside. And, and come to find out, when I joined, it's not nothing like I thought it was gonna be. You know, you always have people that's gonna, he may say this and say this on both sides, black and white. But the people for the most part, majority of ninety-eight percent of them treated me like a decent human being. And if they had, well, ours, if they was had eyes with me, sometimes they were right, sometimes I was wrong. Sometimes they were wrong, sometimes I was right, we later to discuss it. So I think, Counselor, you making a great, uh, choice on the night to appoint Ms. Kellis to replace her husband because she's a person that, that, that has good sense and know how to listen and she has good understanding and she's not a go along and get along type person. So I think, Counselor, on this here, you making the right choice, the right decision to appoint Ms. Kellis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, first I want to, um.
Could you say your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's getting a little foggy in fourteen Mississippi. First of all, I just lost my husband last week, so I certainly, um, understand your loss and appreciate that, you know? So this is not, nothing to do with that and I wanted to make that a little clear because I really do understand that. But, um, I want to address the fact that you managed to strag- straggle this out to the point where you could appoint somebody, remain here to term rather than allowing people to make an election. I'm really disappointed. I think it was intentional and I think it was planned. And I know you consider it not to say that's not true, but you knew what was going to happen and you chose to do it that way. It's not even you and it's not you much, and I'm not talking about you, but it's you and it's not directed to you. You know, it's directed to the other people that comes over unaware of what the choices were and not remain consistent. Really disappointing. I'm, I hope that it works out well for you and welcome and I'm glad you're here. Not again, not directed to you without, but other people in the council.
Next, please.
He had Christ six four one seven, she did. I, I understand what she's saying, but my question is, I thought if a person dies, it's only the temporary, not.
This is to be relevant to the October, the October election.
All right. October, the election. So that was my question, was it permanent or change? Because the people ultimately decide who feels that position, just like Danielle, y'all. The people have rights, he had temporary. So that's my question, is this the same process?
Thank you.
Is, is certain?
It's the same thing, we have to have a feeling.
Okay.
We got a feeling until October.
Okay.
And before the next person comes, I want to let everybody in the room know there's a unique situation in this. In October of twenty twenty-five, when this election is held, that person, whoever wins in that election, cannot be Ms. Kellis. She can't run in that election or the next election under state law and city charter. That person will be up for real election in O- in October of twenty twenty-six. So they got to run up your library with all the way our elections fall. All right.
But I'm from Avenue twenty-seven, Avenue J. I'd just like to welcome Ms. Julie, the fight continues. It continues and I'm pretty sure you've done a great job. You've been taught by this. So we ain't worried about you stumbling, we ain't worried about you, you know? We know that you able to handle the position. And, yeah, you, you're my councilwoman. You know, I'm living this, you, you are my councilwoman. And I'm proud to have you today. Counselor. Counselor, being, um, I'm proud of y'all for this appointment, you know? Pretty sure she up for the task, you know, serving her hood, proud as a white should, you know? So again, yeah, great day. Thank you, y'all.
I would like to say, uh, that Julie, uh, showed an interest. There were many council meetings that was in favor of denying, uh, denying Kenny to, to keep on in his position. But he did, he did keep on his position to the point where he called again. But there, there were people, there were meaningful people about him not returning. But yesterday, his services were beautiful. They were absolutely beautiful. And I know, Julie, I did ask you, she did express an interest. And with her being ready and no one else expressed an interest, so we decided to move forward on this. And at this time, if, if there's no other discussion, I'd like to have a roll call or a vote, please?
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
President Kate?
Aye.
Councilman Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilwoman Temples?
Aye.
And Vice President Urban?
Aye.
Well. We're going to have a debate, a panel of members. And then.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Mrs. Kellis, I'd like to say a couple of important things.
President Kate, um, I want to thank the council for this love and confidence. And you have some mighty big shoes to fill. Kenny, well, this city, this city, for the university. And I just appreciate the love and support from the council that it was shown to us during his illness. And just many thanks and I'm, I'm ready to have work.
Thank you. Uh, next, there's the introduction of ordinance by yours truly. And I'll tell you one thing, I'm not gonna apologize if I stumble and breathe because of the disability that I have with my eye. I tell you that I'm doing this, I can, I still, uh, saying that it can't counsel person for this A and B. Thank you. Welcome again to Councilman Kellis. Introduction of ordinance and ordinance authorizing, um, the retaining of their current CPA to provide professional accounting services of the city of Bubalusa year ending twenty twenty-two. This additional ordinance that we have for introduction is an ordinance, this, this ordinance will be discussed at our next council meeting. An ordinance regarding transitional facility, halfway house, western, family violence, shelter, transitional homelessness. And this will be discussed at our next council meeting. A lot of you know that homelessness is a problem here in the city of Bubalusa, but we'll go in detail at our next council meeting. I have a public hearing adoption of ordinance, you have a estimate a public participation, if you recall the management.
Thank you for participation. You will have two minutes to discuss a topic, any topic of which. Uh, first of all, we have an incident to fly out. Please state the name of that, give us your question.
Kelly, the first one, or to the committee, uh, first one is that you was take through, went through the rules of, uh, conduct behavior and it was to take service and had that one before, um, somebody else spoke. Obviously, we're having trouble with that and I want to work on that a little bit. And taking, taking an additional form, yes, so, uh, let's see, you spoke, you spoke, and then finally she got to speak. You know, we didn't take an attorney, we went back and forth. So it was, you didn't take an order, out of my understanding, if we read that, then we should have gone through the thing, like, we wish it was and then come back. I'm not gonna argue with you, I'm not gonna give a count on that. Um, the next one is that Brittany, you stopped two people tonight about staying on topic. Okay? You asked Ms. Mesa if she was going to stay on topic and you asked, the lady that here, if she was going to stay on topic. And you said that it was because her name was on the, um, on the list, but my name was on the list. And you never asked me if I was going to stay on topic, you know? And I talked to you last time, and this is what I got in trouble with last time, you got shipped out and bracked out was because you need to say, is, is everybody have their terms? Or say, is there any lady else who wants to have public discussion? You know, instead of just deciding it's done, you know, if you just took a moment, paused and asked it for finished, then that issue wouldn't happen, you wouldn't be frustrated and people wouldn't feel like they were left out of the call. Okay, it's a very simple solution. Okay, it's a very simple solution. Um, the other thing is that other people have been attacked for nasty or inappropriate remarks. There are several tonight that were really inappropriate, um, and pretty nasty. And it's your God as counsel to monitor those. Um, um, and then I want to address the counsel about yelling at the audience. Um, I expect the forum from everybody, including the council members, there's no reason to raise your voice, there's no reason to act unprofessional. Um, thank you.
Alright, next, on Mr. David Grant.
Thank you all, oh, David Grant, two zero one six zero, St. Teresa Street. Thank you all. Thank you all for what you're doing. How thoughtful of Kenny, and I look forward to seeing him in heaven. Um, thank you all for what you do. Being thick-skinned, I bet you don't drink any coffee before you come here, do you? I wouldn't, I'm glad I didn't tonight. But thank you sincerely. I also like to invite each of you all, I'll give you my phone number afterwards, Mark has it. If you'd ever like to come out to the airport, and I'll give you in thirty minutes, a thirty-year breakdown on what's happened. Sir, I know you just got elected, uh, recently.
I'm gonna follow real...
You don't get, yeah. Please come out, uh, we do have, in spite of the turmoil that's taking place out there, that is taking place out there, um, we do have physically a very nice place. And it's something Bogalusa can be proud of. And I'm, surgery is gonna be happier days again, prosperous days again. People in Bogalusa deserve it, the good folks, the taxpayers. You that, uh, work so hard and endure what you endure up here, God bless you. Thank you for doing what you do, that is, is a true public service. And, uh, the last couple of years out there have been emotionally and financially very hard on my dad and I. I've had to pay over ten thousand dollars in lawyer fees because the mayor turned our water off. There's a bit of a lengthy discussion behind that. I'd be glad to discuss it with you, uh, you know, in detail. We can get as molecular or granular on it as you want. Over a year, our water was cut off. And a couple of weeks ago, I believe that's the very nice gentleman right over there. And I'm, I don't, I'm not being sarcastic. Weren't you the very nice gentleman and accommodators? Thank you. You're the one. I knew there was one here somewhere. You're the guy. He was very nice, very apologetic to my dad. So thank you all. I'll be glad to meet with you all anytime. I'm open book, have nothing to hide. And I only look for the best things for the people of Bogalusa, my wife from here. I got stayed here, I've spoken in many churches here. I care about the city of Bogalusa, and I plan on being here for the rest of my life, at least out of the airport, and participating in the community. So thank you all for what you do.
Alright. The next one we have is Mr. Richard Corsetti. Mr. Corsetti, good evening. Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Richard Corsetti, seven sixty-four, Marshall Richardson Road. Good evening, everyone. I don't have good things to say. And I'm gonna tell you upfront, Bogalusa is pinching pennies. Bogalusa's in trouble. And let me tell you what, out of all you council members, it's not your fault. None of it is. And don't think anybody's saying anything bad to you. You may hear it from, from us, but it's not your fault. And the mayor has done everything he can do. And what has happened to the mayor is he's found out he has to pinch pennies. And when I hear that we may not have a mighty brother, that we have problems with the, with our, uh, taxes, we have problems with our payroll, let me tell you what. This bad time is coming up. Because let me tell you what, when you get in debt for those millions and millions, and you got, on top of this, it's not even what we got in debt right now. It's the streets. It's the plumbing in the streets. We ain't even touched a budget yet. We haven't even seen that money go. And then one minute you got, somebody will sit there, we got three million. The next minute, we got nothing. Next minute, how many, how many, uh, checks do we have that are bouncing at the bank? What is our fees given to the bank for, for the, the funds aren't there? No one talks about that here. And what's Mr. Nielsen costing us this year? No one's even mentioned a dollar that he wants. Is it over a hundred thousand? I'm sure it is. No one's even talked about it. So, I hate to say this, but you know what? Bogalusa's gonna roll down the hill. It is, it's, there is no bringing us back. We need to get with Washington Parish and be Washington Parish here. That's the only way that it's gonna make a comeback, is let them afford us of what we got. I hate to talk like that, but let me tell you what, I don't see it coming back. Everybody has tried in thirty years. And Bogalusa's gone down, down, down. Now the road's sinking. Where's the money? We didn't get the money. If, if all this money was in those accounts, get those plumbing pumps off the streets. You still a pumping water. It's not even our pumps. Where's the money? Go get that off. There is no money. Robin Peter and Penny Paul. And it'll always be that way. Good luck.
Thank you.
Alright, um, the next one we have is Ms. Edeth Preston.
Ms. Edeth Preston, I live at six forty-one, uh, St. Augustine Street. Uh, I wanna address one issue, uh, before I move to my primary target. When you sit here and play in our faces, when I personally sat in the water with the so-called good boy who has your speed down. You don't remember, I invited you at, uh, on his server. But you claim you don't know a good boy solution. Let me move on to my next point. I, there you go. I also explained earlier...
I definitely know and I definitely address it. I was socializing with you.
I'll stop you.
Okay.
Go ahead, Miss Preston.
Alright. The reason I say this is that there have been several issues that span across at least three agencies. The Office of Personnel Management, the Department of Labor, and the EEOC Commission. When I did reach out to the EEOC Commission, I was told it was about a complaint. I've been down there this morning, I'll be back down there Thursday. And like I said, because it goes across several agencies, such as the Department of Labor, the EEOC Commission, and the Office of Personnel Management. A lot of things that are going on in this meeting are being directed. And it's actually being produced. I'm not saying it's all the council. But I'm sick and tired of the council sitting here playing in our face, acting like they're doing everything, or I be having for us. You don't have time for us. Had the time, they weren't even showing up for work. But you have the nerve to sit here and talk about respect. The EEOC Commission is a ball. Anyone who would also like to sign up? I have a, a complaint number for the EEOC and the Department of Labor on this issue, and it is ongoing. And I don't want anybody to think you're being blindsided. The mayor had nothing to do with it. I brought this on my head as a concerned citizen in this community and watching the manipulation going on in this room. Y'all quit to criticize other people until somebody come up here. Then y'all a lot of sitting there in the back, clap, yell, scream, we do nothing about. But the minute someone else says a humbling word, you got my awful problems. You wanna sit here and defend everybody else? Why not defend the city? Do your job. You do the same job you do at your regular job. You treat this the same way. Do you get paid at your regular job when you don't show up for job? Do you get paid for that day? Then the council should be, I'm asking no more of the council than I expect from myself. That's it.
Um, for the order. She don't have to say her name, because I don't have anything to hide. I'm an open book any day of the week as your councilwoman at large. My number is nine eight five, five seven zero, seven one four five. And yes, I have several jobs. I don't take my job away from the job unless they call me back and I have to go. I don't socialize with my coworkers, so therefore the citizens that elected me, I don't socialize with any of y'all unless it's a reason without a doubt. However, yes, I am aware that you did call me. But I... Jinko's phone? Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, off of Mr. Jinko's phone. But however, just like the old saying say, I don't lay down with doctors 'cause you'll get up with fleas, I don't drink with everybody. So therefore, as your councilwoman at large, I am a social drinker, but I'm not an alcoholic. So the next time you want anybody to call you to come out and drink, the answer is gonna be no, it's always no. And for everyone to know on the record, I don't drink with everybody, honey. So, thank you, and you're more than what? You can never come for me, because I'm an open book.
Counselor.
One moment, one moment, one moment. And I'm sorry if anybody think this is out of order, but I just want everybody to know, I don't have anything to hide.
Thank you.
And yes, I am upset, because don't try to play with me, honey. Recession's for those who like to play, and we're not at recess. We're conducting business. As your councilwoman at large, nothing is on my record. You can call me, if you need help, I'm gonna come. If you need assistance, I'm gonna come. If you need me to help clean up in your district, if trash is on the ground, I'm gonna come. But once again, no, I'm never gonna sit and drink alcohol.
Thank you, councilwoman. Ms. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, let's move on, please.
Alright, uh, Reverend Keith Merrill. Please state your name and address for the record.
Keith Merrill, nine twenty-five, East Fourth Street, apartment seventy. The city council has no respect for the public. Counselor, let me ask you all a question. If you own the business, or something like, if you own the business, and you had employees, and you had a certain number of employees, and every time you try to tell the employee something, they have to, you try to tell them something that's gonna make them better at performing their job? What would you do? Don't answer that out loud. I mean, if you have common sense, if you have any kind of knowledge, you would get rid of them, right? Every, every time you tell them something, they... So, we can't tell you all nothing. So we need to treat you all like the bad employee, and only next time we know what to do. Have a blessed day.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, uh, we got Mr. Joe Miller. Mr. Miller's not present. Mr. Tobias Roberts. Mr. Roberts, please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Nine twenty-seven, Avenue, St. James. Boy, boy, boy. If we in Bogalusa can just rise to the challenge of getting past the impound, we will have a good chance at turning Bogalusa around. We really would. If people would call wrong, wrong, and right, right, then we'll have a good chance of coming out of this that we in. Because if you live in Bogalusa, we all get it together. And it's by time people realize that. A lot of them come up here and criticize y'all, and talk down to y'all for absolutely no reason, not looking at what's really going on. They straight overlook the problems that were happening in the city and say, "Counsel this, counsel that." It's personal attacks all the time on the council. That's why I gotta stand up for y'all. I gotta stand behind y'all. I don't like everything y'all do, all the time. I called this case out when she out of line. I called to this, this shit back. I called Mark back, he know it. If you get out of line for what you're supposed to be doing, then I'm that person gonna tell you. That's not helping the city. And that's the only people that I really wanna hear from. Most of them don't mean Bogalusa any good. This is a fan fest for them. They don't care what's really going on in the city. They not trying to help anybody. Not even themselves. So, counsel, do not let these people get under y'all's seat. Do not let these people pull y'all out of the council. Because these people really wish they could be where y'all at. They have tried, and they have failed miserably. And that's how their life is going, miserably. It's by time people who trying to do the right thing, that need a righteous man, somebody that's trying to live for God, with a pure heart. We need people with pure hearts to lead our city. Regardless of race, color, gender. Great example, right, on, on, on the council. Somebody with a pure heart, that's what we need. Y'all can smack y'all teeth, y'all can maul and grow all y'all want, but it is a new day. And nobody is listening to Keith Merrill, I just want y'all to know. Nobody is listening to E. Matt Chris. Nobody. Nobody is listening to those people. She, she the same person who went to that room.
Excuse me.
Go ahead.
There's no personal attacks.
No, no, I'm not attacking you, I'm not attacking, I'm not attacking. I just said nobody is listening. So that we, that's okay, you don't have to worry about it. That's all I'm gonna say.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, I hear the bell, though, all the thank y'all. Stop talking about my father, that's a whole...
Looks like the door sales and these microphones are holding up tonight. So, uh, whoa. The next person is Mr. Faith Barrett, sir. Good evening, sir. Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Faith Barrett, nineteen thirty-one, D. Wick. This administration that we have here now have been sabotaged before they took office. And each council that was here when that was going on, knows that was happening. But you all didn't do anything about it, because you all was a part of the problem. Y'all might not like what I'm saying, but I, I'm, I come to all you people, I'm a great observer. Y'all everything talking all this smack, it just sink in the way y'all try to make people think y'all so great. You all not great. Not great enough. And y'all ain't doing great things for this city. If you all doing great things for this city, when the mayor think that the code force, I had to try to change this city up, you all encouraged the, the judges to do better job than he doing. They have made these people in their family up. So you all ain't doing great job. I have came here time to time, I tell you all, to make the judge do his job like he's supposed to do. But y'all don't do anything. So, I, I got issue with all of this. So, and since this mayor been in office, he was, he was sabotaged before he took office. He been sabotaged since he been in office. That's all going on. And all this charges and rack out on him, I don't need this stuff. I think all this stuff is fabricated. And just how I'm feeling about it. Because it is still not just back in the gift association. I gotta come all this stuff before you all even go. So ain't nobody got blinders on, we know what's going on.
Thank you.
Alright, next is, uh, last one, finally, uh, the next and final, Mr. Richard Brewster.
For the afternoon, Mr. Sanders would like to speak.
I'm gonna stand down.
Okay, okay. He has done administrative remarks, Mr. Sanders. He will speak during administrative remarks.
Yeah. Richard Brewster, nineteen thirty-two, he with Bogalusa down, council. I don't think I can take y'all job. I really don't think I can walk y'all down. Because I couldn't sit there, all the time I been talking like my neighbor, they come, I can't call his name, but I can see my neighbor. Because he never looking at the administration doing anything wrong. The mayor can't do nothing wrong. And what he do do wrong, it's a mistake, it's a mistake. How many mistakes is he gonna make? You councils? I can tip you, I, see, I, I'm like you, I'm something like you there. I am a Christian. I am a man of God. They have a young lady, need a bar allegation against me. Say, I called the police, called Mr. May, May just passed a lot of laws down there. I forgave her, ma'am, I forgave her. Cause she done done about me. Anybody down in that neighborhood know Mr. Richard Brewster? Anybody in Bogalusa know Mr. Richard Brewster? I'm not here for... I'm not here for no white or black. I'm here to apologize, ma'am, but what I said, I'm gonna say it here. Ma'am, he's not here, probably here, ma'am, do what you supposed to do by law. And when you do what you supposed to do by law, I can take it up for you. All the other stuff that they say, that, that he done, the mistake, I don't know. I just know what I see. I talked to y'all, what he said to y'all. And when everybody, sometimes they come up here and lift y'all to the administration, y'all supposed to text it. I know they supposed to ask you questions, they never look over there and say, "Ma'am, what y'all say? Have y'all fixed that yet? Have y'all fixed that yet?" What? Now it's all y'all fault, it's all y'all fault, all the time. And I live in Bogalusa, and, and they think they doing a better job than some of the other administration. I, I feel so bad. I've been here twenty-eight years, this been two or three big man, real bad. And shit ain't up in this man, it, I'm not blaming everything on him now. But I'll tell you one thing the mayor need to do, the mayor made a statement. He admitted a lot of statements that I can bring up, that he made, that I wouldn't make. The mayor said, he put everything aside, he told one of my neighbors, it'll meet with the finance meeting. Now, I would, we, 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 saying it again. I was at the finance meeting, he told one of my neighbors, "We ain't gonna fix nothing else until we get to the sewer." Them his words. Now all of a sudden, cause the pumps can't continue to do what they doing. None of the people, man, I know that that part of those two big old screws, somebody even let them put out a steel screw, they bigger than my truck, just one of them. And they don't understand, so the mayor need to focus on that, focus on that. And don't be worried about the dog part, and, and put the cement down, ma'am, cause we not in a big city. I, I don't have no problem telling them that, that's the wrong thing. And do what he supposed to do. And we don't want nobody to just over here. I come down here, we call, they say we the cream of the crop, but they treat it like it wasn't the cream, cream of the crop, I'm sorry, I couldn't say after work, but anyway, y'all doing a good job.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, next we will have
Yeah, that's it.
Next we have any administrative remarks, Mr. Sanders?
No, no.
There's no Mr. Sanders. There's no Mr. Sanders.
There's no Mr. Sanders.
Okay, I thought it was Mr. Sanders.
He said he's standing there.
Okay, standing there, okay, all right. Okay, uh, councilman Marks, uh, councilman John Wayne.
I would like to thank y'all for coming and now talking, cause I listen, believe it or not, and I might not think, faith, might not think I listen, but I do. When you was here in December, you said the first thing we need to do is fix all the water lines, but the water line was still a hundred year old, you're right. It ain't nothing that's happened here, it's, it's been coming. And I understand that a hundred percent, but we gotta start fixing them now. So we got, somebody gotta start somewhere of doing something. The first thing you gotta do, you gotta hire an engineer. We gotta get an engineer to tell us what the problem's right there. That's what you gotta have, is an engineer going there, and he goes to the sewer plant, he looks at the sewer plant, he tells us what that, and then he goes to the line and tells us what we gotta do. Uh, Austin Street was replaced, all the miles in Austin Street was replaced for twelve miles of the man. He replaced all that, and then he dug the road up, he picked all asphalt up, and everybody thought he was selling asphalt to sell. He was stacking over there on the other side of Burger King, and he sold that asphalt, he did. I agree, so the company would do it, and they came back and laid it back down again, then, then have to buy product, they already had all the product they needed. But he replaced all the lines going down Austin Street, because there was a lot of water issues, and they have a lot of sewer issues over there. But that's the main thing. But we gotta start, I don't know where they're at here, have no idea. All I know is that our money was eight hundred ninety-one thousand dollars when I went to a finance meeting six months ago, five months ago, and then the, and when we voted to put it in sewer, it was down to seven hundred twelve. They dedicated that money in December not to be spent, and we still spent a hundred and sixty thousand dollars somewhere. I'm gonna wear that, Mr. Wade.
Seven hundred forty thousand still up, yeah.
I know that, it was, it was eight hundred ninety-one thousand, four months, four weeks, before you came.
It was an engineer.
Uh, I'm trying to think, I'm trying to think, my engineer. Well, we need another engineer. I'm saying your DQ report, I mean, the first time they're saying, you don't occupy the city, that's the very first time.
I agree, I agree.
And DQ thing, and others.
We got very much.
So, I'm sorry, yeah, well, I was trying to find what they were doing. Well, that's the first thing we gotta do. We gotta solve the two problem, and the water problem in the city. And I, and I think, if I was looking at it, what is it, I think it's millions of dollars. There ain't no little bit, three hundred thousand, three million ain't gonna come close to. So somewhere we gotta start finding money, we gotta get in compliance. We're not in compliance, two thousand twenty-five, we ain't gonna put you in compliance. You gotta go to twenty-three, you gotta get twenty-two done, get to twenty-three and twenty-four before you get compliant, before we get the four, five million the state has up there, plus the federal money that we can get. But we gotta get in compliance, the very first thing you gotta do. And we not gonna get any compliance, and get any money, and I agree, the mayor has no money to operate with. So, you get your taxes just once a year, and we pay that, and it's over with, and then your sales tax coming in. But, that's what you gotta do, but the first thing we gotta do, we gotta solve our problem, we gotta hire an engineer, we gotta get an engineer. And that's in the DQ report, if anybody wants a copy of that, I was gonna zip off the end of that to y'all, and I left it at my store. That's bad too, my fault, but I got a copy of this other report that was given on one twelve of two thousand twenty-five. The first thing they gave was, they gave us seven days to go to all the pumping stations, clean them up, and put the line back. Don't look, we ever did that, have no idea. You know, so, that was the first thing, and next thing, you have to hire an engineer. Put him in the sewer plant, and do in the water lines, and, and the sewer line, and find out where the problem is, then hire somebody to come in and fix it. We can't fix it, you have to hire someone. And that's gonna take money, so you gonna have to have some, but you're right, that's where we start, you gotta solve the water line and sewer line up here, Bogalusa.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Uh, this temple.
Well, I thought this was gonna be a really quick meeting, we had three resolutions to vote on and two introductions, and yet again, we end up on wild tangents. We've got, we've got to start convincing these meetings and staying on topic, because we've, we've sat here for
Two hours.
Two hours for three resolutions and two introductions. So hopefully, we can start staying on topic. I don't understand why we as a council have to sit here and listen to citizens raise their voice at us, but they don't like it when some of us do it back to them. Respect goes two ways. Respect goes two ways. You can't come up here and scream and holler at us, and use a certain tone of voice, and think we're supposed to sit here and take it, but yet we do. But then when council members feel the need to fight for themselves, basically, citizens don't like that. Respect goes two ways, I'm just gonna leave it at that, thank you for coming.
Thank you. Mrs. Phillips.
Thank everyone for coming out tonight, I think, uh, uh, Bill all been into my, pull my straps up and go work for this city, but I'll thank everyone for their help in scanning, and I'm looking forward to running for council, and this conjunction, and leading this city forward. I want y'all.
Thank you. Councilwoman Smith.
I would like to thank everybody for taking their time out to come to, to the city, um, council meeting to conduct business. We're here for business, and as Miss Temple, um, already said, I echo, um, it's not about getting out of here fast, it's about being productive, and knowing that the city business is being well taken care of. However, I'm gonna continue to say it as long as I sit here, I have nothing to hide. I try to be very transparent with every follow-up that I receive. I try to turn in every work order in a timely manner. It's not my fault if it's being blocked, my job is to make sure if it has been blocked to unblock it, and that the work orders are being done. I'm not gonna apologize for anything I say, because it's not out of rage, it's, it's all the truth. I have nothing to hide, I'm not anyone to play with. If you come for me, or call yourself doing slurs to come for me, you better come correct. Cause I'm standing on business, and have always stood on business, and that's why the citizens elected me. I don't see black and white. I don't see any color. There is no color, only color I see green, and I'm out, and I am about making my dollars. That's why my parents sent me to get highly educated and never duplicated. Thank you, Ms. Brenda, for coming out. Thank you, Ms. Julie, you are such a strong and phenomenal woman. I commend you for everything that you have been through, everything that you're gonna go through, and thank you for being faithful to this community, to your husband, as well as his legacy. Thank you to the administration team for working with our mayor. Thank you for, um, coming aboard and just trying to do what's right. And no matter what time, or where I see him at, whatever questions I have, Mr. Perry, he always try to answer them correctly, respectfully, and it's just about remaining in order. So if anyone feel that I'm out of order as a councilwoman, I'm just gonna tell you that I am human, and I'm never to be played with. So if you think you're gonna play with me, you better come correct, because I'm not gonna apologize, because we're all wrong. We're here to conduct business. The things y'all doing say about me, my family, I'll take it, and I take it prescribed, it's okay. The things y'all do to our president, that's wrong, that's hurtful. Put yourself in her shoes. No matter what time of the night I call her, she's gonna get up, take a ride with me, fill out a work order. Mr. Irvin as well, he's taking care of an elderly sick mother, and it's just shameful of some of the comments that are sent to me about Ms. Case. Some people, like I say, need to stop and look at their own self, evaluate their own situation, their family situation, and are you taking care of your loved one before you play with this lady, which is President Case? She endures a lot, she takes a lot. She has a disability, and she just told you that. And yes, my time is up, and I am a little long-winded, and I do apologize. But for those who are here that mean business, please understand, we're not trying to work against any administration. We're here to do what's right. The city is snowballing, and as Mr. Mark will always say, we need to first pray and try to do better. The city's never gonna grow forward if we continue trying to put it back. May y'all each have a wonderful and blessed night, and I'm glad that everyone made it, um, through the, through the snow, and that we did check on our neighbors, so thanks to the police department, to the, um, you know, mess department, to the fire department. I thank y'all for a job well done, and I'm gonna say that I spoke to the chief of police, and to the chief of fire. If y'all only knew the half, if y'all only knew the half, you would know that we're trying to stand on business. But if each department is being blocked, not only are we gonna worry about the checks bouncing, we're gonna have to worry about people walking out, leaving their jobs, to go down the highway to sanctimony, to get a better job. So we have to do right, love is in our heart, and we have to show love. And it's not that I don't love anyone, but I just feel like as an elder, you cannot come to the podium and disrespect me, and no one is gonna allow me and think that I'm not gonna get a stretch.
Time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilwoman.
I want to thank everyone for coming tonight, and I meant what I said at that bridge. I don't hate nobody, I just hate the process, keep that key thing in mind. You just hate the process and what has been done. I will tell you something, I used to manage employees of major retail, retailers throughout Washington Parish, made millions of dollars. Well, I made nine dollars and fifty cents out of those retailers. That was back then, I worked for them for twenty years, various retailers. I will tell you one thing, that if the employees around here need to be treated more fairly, more part of the team, and don't need to be walking on eggshells every morning there, when they come into this building, not talking about all of them. And those doors need to be open to all citizens, black, white, Asian, whoever they need to be. And we need to be open, and listen, we have special phone numbers that, that our citizens can call. I maintain a special phone number that my citizens, that my people can call in. I, I'm just gonna tell you, I, I'm, I pray for this city, I've been every day. And I will tell you, I took my elderly disabled mother, and she don't mind me telling you, because I have disclosed this before. She's got Parkinson's, she's a little halfway, she can't hardly walk. I put her in the bed while I had to go get business at the state capitol. I took over seven hundred dollars out of my pocket, which I'm only making sixty dollars a week right now, because we're dealing with all the issues. I can't even get to work right now, because I'm hearing about, "Did you hear about the sewer system? Hey, Mark, come on up here, you're getting service of income." Say, "Well, son," this is gotta stop. I have never seen anything in this life in my, in my life. And I'm gonna tell you something, I used to be a manager of those stores, and if I had done that, they would have fired me. They would have fired me, they did one morning, they fired me, okay? I was telling you, this, this has gotten, it's gotten out of hand. I can't stand us getting paid by paper checks. I can't stand that, that is ridiculous, we used to be on a direct deposit, that needs to change. All right, one last thing. It, it, that, this, it is just, it, it needs to work, the citizens of Bogalusa, and I'm gonna say my piece. We have been on a city charter since nineteen seventy-eight. It's time for a new vote, for a new charter, a council administrator form of government that works better. We will have administrator in charge, and the council will be fully responsible for everything. Then the administrator, administrator don't, the, the, uh, the city administrator don't, then did his job and helped execute what needs to be done, he's gone, right there, we will have a right to fire, iron fire. Some cities in Louisiana already has that, I'm in favor of that type system. We've been going downhill ever since we put that charter in place, because it's, it's, it's a tension, constantly. It won't affect the unions, it won't affect none of them, the unions will stay in place, but there will be a lot of changes on the top. I'm in favor of a council administrator form of government, I'm gonna record say that, goodnight.
Thank you. I would like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. This is say, there's been a very strategic meeting tonight, with the decisions that were made tonight, uh, with the decisions that were made by the fiscal administrator committee, uh, last week, and with the particulars that were, that were mentioned, that we did not know about. We have to get our city back in order. It's not about us thinking that we're all good, as was mentioned earlier, and that we're pretending. We're actually wanting our city to thrive and to grow. And as was mentioned earlier, if we are, if we are in good standing or hit that way, once the administrator gets here, it will show. And we continue, as I mentioned earlier, this administrator will be working with the mayor, along with the council, to assist our city. We still have a mayor, we still have a council. If that's understood. To, to see some of the, uh, the actual, uh, comments that have been made, it is, it's, it's sickening, it's sickening, but our city can get through this, they actually can. I attended the Louisiana Municipal Association's convention on last week, and it, it is, it's somewhat embarrassing, because some of the mayors there, some, some of the mentors, some of my mentors that were there, that's all they talk about. That's all they talk, "Bogals, Bogals, why, why, you know, why are you guys being treated like this, why is this going on?" But you know, all of our business is actually in the, uh, is aired out on television, uh, in videos, you know, but we can show the world that we can do better, and that's why we here, to do better. And I will be, uh, if God's willing, I will continue to show this in my fourth term when I run, for whatever I run for. Okay? I would like to also say, uh, well, again, you're gonna do a great job, you know. And, uh, as I said, Kenny, Kenny looked very good this day. He really did. God bless you. Uh, like you mentioned, uh, Ms. Brenda's here, let's give her a clap. Ms. Brenda, she has been our, our backbone. We're hoping that she will be back soon, or we'll, we'll talk about the next steps. But thank you for coming out tonight. And thank you for your support with us. And we'd like to thank the Justice Office for coming. Ms. Tanya's here tonight, Ms. Diddy's here. They have been helping us out tremendously in Ms. Brenda's absence. So, thank you. Uh, happy Valentine's Day to everyone. Uh, continue prayers for our bill of duty and our city's shut-in. And, uh, as I said, keep, keep us in your prayers. Uh, Councilman Irvin mentioned the council, uh, administrat, administrative form of government, that's something that, uh, that has been explored in my mind. On that particular process. But it will be, uh, explored. And with that being said, uh, as you said, we're gonna try to cut these meetings down. But I think, I think about, I think about opening laws, you know, once an individual signs up on the list, you know, they do have the right to speak. Maybe we have to look at our timeline again to, to shore it, you know? But thank you, thank you everyone for coming out. God bless you.